Okay. Meeting of the North Reading School Committee to order. It's great to be at the Little School tonight. This is the home school for a couple of us up here. I think Jerry's daughter went here and my daughter and son both went here. And they're all in college now. Oh, no, my son will be in college next year. But Jerry's daughter and my daughter are in college. So it's been a long time since they've been here. But that was a great foundation for them. At this time, I'll see if there's any public input. Does anybody in the public that would like to be heard on any issue tonight? Seeing nobody, we'll now go to Matt Leighton. And he's going to give us the high school report. Matt?
Thank you, Ms. Swep, sir. So this past Saturday, the boys' high school basketball team defeated Watertown 57-40 in their quarterfinal game at the high school. They will be advancing to the semifinals, which will be held on Wednesday at 7:00 at Burlington High School. They'll play the winner of the Weyland Arlington Catholic game, which is being held tonight, right now. For any student that is interested in going to the game, there'll be a fan bus available for a cost of $5. Sixteen student council members leave for Hyannis on Wednesday to attend the annual Massachusetts Association of Student Council's conferences. They'll be staying at the Hyannis Resort and Conference Center, and they're all looking forward to it. They hope to have a great year like they did last year. And they will be returning on Friday. Also, this past Saturday, maskers competed in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild One Act Drama Fest at Hamilton-Wonham High School, performing "Lettuce and Lovage." Luke Ince and Julie Landy won Technical Excellence Award for building and execution of the revolving set. Also, Marsha Berry, Megan O'Brien, Lori Stimson, Adele Zhang, and Julie Landy won Best Technical Set Design for their work on the set. Also, Sarah Lilly won Best Leading Actress, and the entire cast and crew won Covenant Stage Manager's Award for their entire festival attitude, sportsmanship, citizenship, worth ethic, and ensemble work. Last Tuesday, the boys' hockey team lost their first state's game at Wilburn, losing to Boston Latin 4-3 in overtime. They had an excellent season, going 9-8-3. Also, last Thursday, the girls' basketball team lost their first state's game as well to Ipswich 68-34. They also had a terrific season, going 10-10. This upcoming Friday will be a half-day for teacher development, and next Thursday there'll be a half-day for NEAS work. The wrestling team had a very successful season, excuse me, going 25-0. Eric Kirk, a Lynnfield student, qualified for the New England Tournament. This has been the first time a member of the team has qualified for the state tournament since 1999. Winter Sports Worlds will be held tomorrow night at 6:30 in the gym. On March 27th, all students will be attending a presentation that will discuss anti-drinking and driving program called Save a Life, which is being sponsored by SAD and the Community Impact Team. Last week, junior students completed their course selection process for next year. Today, sophomores had their meetings about course selection. The Life Smarts team will be heading to Boston next Monday to compete in the Life Smarts competition at the Crowe Reserve Building. And national honor society candidates turned in their applications last Wednesday. For my student work this evening, I thought I would talk about a project we did in my world history class. We did a mock debate about Turkey's admittance into the European Union. Each student represented a different country in the EU. My country had to be Luxembourg. And we had to talk about why we thought our country should or should not allow Turkey into the EU. So, my country of Luxembourg, I'll just get a little background about it. They thought that Turkey should not join the EU because they thought it would destruct their population. It's only made up of about 33 percent of foreigners. So they thought if Turkey was admitted, more of the Turkish residents will have easier time immigrating to Europe. So they thought more people would come to Turkey since it's small and a nice country. And they thought that would disturb it. And one other point, I did a lot of research about graphs and people's responses to it. And a lot of it, a lot of the country's population is against to it. Only one-third of the population is in favor of allowing other potential EU candidates into the EU. So it was very interesting, and then we had to write a paper about it, just an overall view of what we thought of the debate and, again, our country's view on the topic.
Any questions from Matt? Just wanted to make a comment. The basketball team is 21-0, which is the first time in North Reading history that a school has, a team has gone this long and beaten. So you get to Burlington Wednesday night, and I'll be there. But that's good reasoning, though, I guess.
But Matt, a shout-out to all of our winter sports teams. They had an incredible season. As you heard, the wrestling team was 25-0. The girls' basketball team and the hockey team both qualified through the state tournament. The indoor track team had people who won Division Four titles. I think Emily Marie Meschadput and Johnny Brager, the 55-yard hurler. So we had a tremendous, tremendous year, which is following up on a great fall sports season in last spring as well. So I think our baseball team and our softball team are favorites for the state championship this year, don't they?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to turn the room over to Ms. Wallace.
Hi. Good evening, and welcome once again to the Little School. It's always a pleasure to have you here. A philosophy and focus of the Little School is the education of the whole child. The whole child philosophy says that every child at school deserves to be healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. And listed in your brochure that I included in your folders are some of the activities that the Little School staff and students have participated in this year. We have become so accustomed to focusing on our academic success that we often need to remind ourselves about the importance of fostering social responsibility, building relationships, and developing children with a capacity for empathy and strong decision-making. As time is limited this evening, I encourage you to look through the brochure to appreciate the activities that we have engaged in this year. In addition to information regarding the presentations you will see here tonight, your folders also include self-esteem poetry from Mrs. O'Brien's class, that's a fifth-grade class, anti-bullying poetry from Mrs. Bedavas's fifth-grade class, information from our No Name Calling Week, Where's My Manners, a manners initiative that was developed by Laurie McBride and Phil Lynch. You'll also find a No Atom lesson on DNA and heredity from Mr. Simmons' fourth-grade class, and information regarding the Silk Road from Ms. Deviss's fifth-grade class. As you know, I'm very proud of the work that we do at the Little School. I would like to publicly thank the faculty and staff for their hard work and dedication to our students. I would also like to take the time to thank all members of the Little School staff, students, parents, members of the PTO, and the school council that took time out of their day to be here tonight. It is greatly appreciated. Tonight, I am happy to turn the stage over to some very talented students that will be sharing some of their work this year. We will have a Grade Four No Atom presentation about DNA and heredity. John Tremontosi and Nazrin Ordil will be explaining what they learned recently in Mr. Simmons' science class. We will have Ms. Deviss's Grade Five Social Studies students, Lorman Keough and Cameron Randazzo, share their journey down the Silk Road. And last but not least, we will hear some beautifully written poetry from three students in Ms. Bedavas's Grade Five class. Ally Batten, Griffin May, and Kylie McCarthy will be sharing what they wrote during our recent celebration of No Name Calling Week. And so now, I would like to turn the floor over to John Tremontosi and Nazrin Ordil. So I will say...
Good afternoon. My name is John Tremontosi. In No Atom Science, we have been learning about heredity and traits. Traits are identified as a common organism. Heredity is the passing of traits from parents to children. When you are first born, you get one half of your mother's traits and one half of your father's traits. These traits are called fully inherited traits. Fully inherited traits are traits that are passed on directly from parents or ancestors. A fully inherited trait never goes away. When I was born, I got my dad's eyes, hair, and athleticism. Then I got my mom's nose, freckles, and braids.
Where's all that? Where's all that? Thank God, thank God for your mom, yeah. That's good.
Good evening. My name is Nazrin Ordil. In No Atom Science, we've been studying about DNA, which is a molecule that contains genes that determine organisms' traits. During class, we built a model of a DNA strand, which determines three traits for a frog. The first set of three nucleotides stand for the size of a frog. This is a large frog. The next three nucleotides stand for the frog's color. This is a green frog. The last set of two nucleotides stand for whether the frog has a yellow stripe or dark spots. In this case, it has a yellow stripe. And each DNA strand has a sugar phosphate backbone and nucleotides. Each nucleotide is either made up of adenine, cytosine, or thymine and guanine. All DNA is located in the nucleus of all cells. My frog is a dark, it's a green, small, dark-spotted frog. The first three set of nucleotides, blue, pink, gray, stand for its size, which is small. The next three nucleotides, which correspond for if it's green, if it's green or brown, it's green, pink, blue, pink. The last two nucleotides stand for whether it has a yellow stripe or dark spots. My frog has dark spots, blue and pink.
Great. What question for you? Now, we've seen a lot of the No Atom program this year, and we think it's great at the school community. Do you like the No Atom program?
Yeah, but they sometimes make mistakes.
Well, that's what it's more of, I mean. You get to experiment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Well, thanks. Very good. Any other questions?
Great job. Great job.
Thank you. Now, we have Jerry Downer's Silk Road, Lauren Keough, and Cameron Randazzo.
The fifth grade is currently working on the Silk Road project. Ms. Deviss felt that we needed to know that Marco Polo was more than just the name of a water game, and that a caravan is not just the name of a dog. Marco Polo was the first European to travel to China and back. He left Venice, Italy in 1271 with his father and uncle and returned 24 years later. Stories of what he had seen opened the doors to the trade between Europe and Asia and inspired future explorers, including Christopher Columbus and Amerigo Vespucci.
The Silk Road was a famous trade route that connected Europe to Asia. It was over 7,000 miles long, one-fourth the distance around the Earth. There were actually many different routes over land and sea, and many different goods besides silk were traded. Examples of goods included glass from Europe, silk, spices, and porcelain from China, also pearls, gold, silver, oils, and Persian carpets.
Also exchanged between the people of Europe and Asia were religion, medicine, music, art, languages, and culture, which is the way of the life of a people. For our Silk Road project, we are creating a miniature caravan of 68 camels that will be traveling along the Silk Road from the Mediterranean Sea to China. Each fifth grader will be riding their own camel and carrying goods to be traded. We will also be writing about our travels in our Silk Road journal.
A giant backdrop of a map of Europe and Asia will be set up behind the caravan to show the many routes taken, as well as the landmarks. This will be on display on academic night in April. These are some of the camels we created. We're going to put, drop goods on them and show what they carry.
And we're gonna be taking pictures and cutting pictures of our faces and putting them on the people, so it looks like we're riding them.
These are journals that we are going to write in, but the project is still in progress, and we'll have them finished by the end of the year.
Good job. Do you know if Ms. Deviss is gonna make a real camel in it all?
I was thinking you might appropriate...
Some fun. I guess we know the answer.
You know, it's a true story. Marco Polo left Venice, he told his wife he was going out for a quart of milk. He came back 24 years later.
Nice job.
Any questions?
Good job.
Very nice job.
Lauren, on her own, decided to compose a Silk Road song that she wanted to sing for you.
Oh, wow.
It's not in the program.
I got my camel far along where I... Two question... Ugh. I got my camel far along where I... Two question, come and travel away. And I sure would like to burn down my... My journey on the Silk Road. When I'm gone, when I'm gone, I'm gonna learn when I'm gone. I'm gonna trade at a bazaar. Okay. That is messed up. So I'll sing it, so that I can... Okay. When I'm gone, when I'm gone, I'm gonna trade when I'm gone. I'm gonna trade at a bazaar where they come here and borrow. I'm gonna trade at a bazaar. I got my camel far along where I ride, the one with the prettiest two wheels. It's hill mountains, got rivers, it's got skies that give you shivers. But it sure would be prettier with you. When I'm gone, when I'm gone, I'm gonna trade when I'm gone. I'm gonna trade at a bazaar where they come here and borrow. I'm gonna trade at a bazaar.
That's the first improv we've had at any school visit in like six years.
That was really, really good. Really good.
And then, late January, we celebrated No Name Calling Week with a series of events, like the outline in your folders. And we had many wonderful projects going on in the classroom. Some of which you see mounted on the back walls of the cafeteria. The kids really, really took a great interest in it, and we were very proud of the results. Tonight, we have three students who will be reading some poetry that they wrote. Ally Batten, Kylie McCarthy, and Griffin May.
On the bus, he's there every day to call me something he shouldn't say. I cry tonight, tomorrow too, because I get bullied by you. I try to ignore him, but what does that do? I think he might need a little clue. There's always that kid who watches but does nothing. I try and think when he will try and do something. I saw him yesterday go to a teacher, maybe he told on that creepy creature. The next day, there isn't anyone calling before I. I think the person has stopped his malicious lies. Finally, I found out the kid who seemed to be staring into space went to a teacher to put things into place. Now I go to bed with a full heart because that bystander gave me a new start.
It happens every day, and it affects me in every possible way. Always hurts inside like broken glass. How to stop it when I'm treated like trash? Maybe I could show him how it feels to be me, to show him how my life used to be, to show him this is not right, to get people to stare at a horrible sight. All it took was one word, one more person, want to say, "Stop."
I'm miserable, says Beat. The bullies are insulting me. I hate my life, it makes me sad. What's happening is very bad. They're a bunch of kids who stand around, they do nothing to help, it gets me down. Hour by hour, day by day, the bullies are taking life's pleasure away. They make fun of me just because I am smart, they're chipping away a hole in my heart. It feels like today will never end, I don't even have a single friend. So stand up to bullies because you see there are thousands of kids who are just like me.
I did want to say that I kept a follow-up to make sure that they were fictional. There was nothing to worry about, and they showed me that they were fictional. So, with that being said, I hope that we be quick. I hope you enjoyed tonight's presentation. Again, I would like to call your attention to the back of your brochure, and invite you to attend some of our upcoming events, or perhaps a visitor to school day to get a real sense of what holds onto the Little School. Thank you for visiting us tonight. Have a wonderful night.
Nice job. Jerry, good job.
Want to ask a question?
Okay. Next, we're going to have a couple of representatives from the North Reading senior class. They're gonna come talk to us about the senior trip and their advisory. Two Michaels.
Good evening. I'm Mike Walsh. I propose a trip for the senior class of 2013. It will be to Forks Manor, to the Northern Outdoors Forks Resort, to do whitewater rafting.
I'm Michael Vito. We've done this trip the last few years, and we plan to stay one night in the lakeside cabins at the resort. This is different cabins, Steve?
Different than last year. They're slightly down the road, so they're a little bit separate from the main area.
A little roomier, too, which would be nicer. And so the bus company that we'll be using is MBT Worldwide, which is out of Tewksbury, Mass. And we believe, I think we had attached the safety report in the initial proposal, and it looked very safe and a very efficient bus company.
Now, we have our proposed agenda. We plan on leaving on Saturday, May 11th at 9:00 a.m., and we will return on Sunday, May 12th, at approximately 10:00 p.m.
And when we arrive, we approximate that'll be around 3:00 o'clock. We'll have free time to explore the amenities of the resort, and then we'll have a barbecue dinner. And there are many things to do at the resort. There's a pool, there are basketball courts, there are tennis courts, there's a hot tub, and then there's a nice restaurant where we're gonna have our barbecue dinner. And we were talking about possibly having a dance that night. We're not sure if we'll be able to have the room or not to have it.
On Sunday morning, we will depart from the resort at 8:00 a.m. Using the same bus company?
Yeah. Well, no, actually, the bus company would be provided by the resort.
By the resort. To head to the Kinnivek River for a day of whitewater rafting.
And the rafting will take five to six hours, and it's on Class 2 to 3 rapids.
Then we will return to the resort and have lunch and pack up. Then we depart at approximately 6:00 p.m. back to the school.
And the estimated cost, I had below $200, but we think it's gonna be around $230 now based off the latest amount of kits.
And we're gonna do the payments in installments, so we're not having people pay all at once. And if there are money issues, we, as a senior class, are willing to help out any student that needs it.
And we have 47 students who are signed up to go on the trip. And we think that there's gonna be six chaperones, including Ms. Diozy and our school principal, Mr. Bernard, will be going.
Do you have any questions?
I have one. It might be more for Ms. Diozy, but you guys can probably chime in, too. They've been doing this trip for a while, and when my daughters, the Class 2010, went, I know they had a great time. But it seems like every year, there's fewer kids signing up, or it's a pretty small number. And I'm just wondering, obviously, we can't force kids to take a class trip, but it would be great if we had more students attending. Do you have any idea what the hesitancy is, or why we're getting kind of smaller numbers over the last few years?
I think there are a couple of things. It's actually more than last year. Last year, you had a really tiny turnout. So we've almost doubled our numbers. But I think there's always conflicts with sports. I know there was a big dance recital that a bunch of the girls were in, and they couldn't go. But it's really hard to find a weekend in the spring where everybody can go, unfortunately. So I think that's a big part of it. And then, I'm not sure if you guys might have any other ideas, but...
That's what I've heard, that a lot of the teams have games or meets during that weekend or during the week. And so some of the coaches are allowing kids to go where others aren't as lenient.
Well, it's probably 30, 40, maybe 45 seniors involved in school athletics. That's probably a good part of it, yeah.
Any other questions?
Tom.
Can I have a motion to approve the proposed senior class trip?
So...
For the discussion? Agreeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your president voted for victory, Mike. End of line. There you go.
Very persuasive.
Very good. I'll tell Tom you look nice in the tie. Okay. Getting back to our regular agenda now, we're gonna have an update on the secondary school building project. Ms. Wallace?
Yes. Since the last school committee meeting, the Secondary School Building Committee met on February 12th and February 26th. I will go through some of the highlights from these meetings as follows, but I thought we'd begin with a construction update. Mr. Bowers has been on the site almost daily, so I thought he might want to give an update on what has taken place.
We're moving along pretty rapidly at this point. The things that have happened, pretty much building foundations for Building A, the high school wing, are just about all in. There's a little connector piece that goes in where the connectors were Main Street and the underground connection to the truckway. That piece is not yet filled in because they're still using a truck into the foundation area. They have a few of the column footings to be done. Essentially, all of...
Proves unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your first political victory, Mike. End of it. There you go.
Very persuasive.
Very good. I'll tell Tom you look nice in the tie. Okay. Getting back to our regular agenda now, we're going to have an update on the secondary school building project. Ms. Willis?
Yes. Since the last school committee meeting, the secondary school building committee met on February 12th and February 26th. I will go through some of the highlights from these meetings as follows, but I thought we'd begin with a construction update. Mr. Bowers has been on the site almost daily, so I thought he might want to give an update on what has taken place.
We're moving along pretty rapidly at this point. The things that have happened, pretty much building foundations for Building A, the high school wing, are just about all in. There's a little connector piece that goes in where the connectors were Main Street and the underground connection to the truckway. That piece is not yet filled in because they still using a truck into the foundation area. They have a few of the column footings to be done. Essentially, all of the unsuitable material has been removed. The backfill of that is ongoing. I get reminded about that today because the, I understand the second floor of the middle school was vibrating adversely. But the vibrating roller is there to compact the soil, so pretty soon that will be done and things will be quieter. Foundation for the B.C. retaining wall and concrete placement for that, we put 130 cubic yards in that about a week ago and that's now the steel for that wall, it's a pretty high wall, is being put together and tied off. I expect that probably within a week we'll have that wall poured, within a week we'll have that wall poured. The anti-proofing and backfilling is ongoing. This excavation and backfill for the access rotor started, not down the low part but at the upper part. The waterproofing of the elevator pit slab has been done. In the next two weeks, we're going to see the backfill of Building B, which is the auditorium, cafeteria, truckway area, is going to be going in. The media center and Main Street and office spaces, those are two different levels, the lower level and the, and the same level as the current middle school. So those will be brought up. And that is pretty much integrated with that wall, retaining wall has to be there before we can finish backfilling for Building B. The excavation for Building D, which is the gymnasium, is going to be starting up in the next two weeks. So we'll start to see where that's going. And the underground utilities in the next six weeks, those will be going in. We have a tremendous amount of pipe that's going in the ground. And near the end of the month, we'll start to see some steel for Building A. It'll be starting on the corner closest to Sherman Road and moving across the front and back into the building. So progress is ongoing.
In addition, thank you, regarding a design update, the 100% construction documents are on target for completion. The 90% construction documents are complete and have been submitted to the MSBA. Just last week, we did receive a letter from the MSBA indicating their receipt of the construction documents and as typical, they provided their comments regarding the submission and review of those documents and requests for any outstanding documents that need to still be submitted. That mailing is always sent directly to our town administrator who then forwards a copy to me. The cost of schedule delay was reviewed in detail at one of our previous meetings. Planning meeting dates for the informational forum 2 were identified and have since been held. The order of bid alternates was revised and voted as follows. The first bid alternate will be the wastewater treatment plant, the second will be the district office, the third, the tennis courts, and the fourth, the athletic field team building. The fire department met with the architects and had identified a list of proprietary requests. Those requests were reviewed by the SSBC and voted. An appeal has been filed with the zoning board by two butters to the school project. An executive session was held after each of the meetings for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and potential litigation. The second of three informational forums was held on Thursday, February 28th from 7:00 to 9:45 PM. The presentation lasted approximately 35 minutes and the remainder of the time was dedicated to public discourse. There were approximately 70 members of the community in attendance in the audience in addition to members of the secondary school building committee. The primary focus areas of the presentation included project status update, the secondary school building committee response to the project budget gap, new items for consideration regarding needing that budget gap between the current budget project and the range of new funds needed. The range of new funds needed for the budget to be completed as designed was identified as being 13 to 16 million dollars. And the estimated tax impact on the average home value of $450,000 was also identified as a range between $155 to $190 per year. The final information forum will take place on Thursday, March 14th. At that time, the secondary school building committee will present the guaranteed maximum price for the project as well as a tax impact analysis. Additional important dates that have to do with the building project include March 11th, where there will be a joint meeting of the secondary school building committee, the school committee, and the board of selectmen at the town hall, Room 14, beginning at 6:00 PM next Monday. March 18th is the special town meeting that has been scheduled and March 22nd is the special election. The next secondary school building committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday, March 5th, beginning at 5:30 PM in the high school modular cafeteria. And as always, these meetings are open to the public.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Moving on to the next item, an all-time favorite, revising the policy manual.
Yes.
This is second reading for a number of policy manuals under section I that were reviewed last week. The first one is ICAC, which we deleted. I don't think we have to vote to delete it again. We've already voted to delete that. So next we move to ICB. Or I can actually, if you want me to go through it, you can go through it either way. All right. That's the only thing that is. There you go, ICB.
Just something really. We don't really need to.
ICB changed titles.
No changes from the first reading to the second.
Right, but we have to.
Name changed.
Right, so we just have to vote to approve a second, okay. Motion, may I motion Karen, through second reading, for curriculum planning?
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. ICD?
I'm motion for the second reading, change is ICB.
Oh, we took out avoid faddish innovation. Yeah, that was one of my favorite, that was one of my favorite lines of all time. Faddish innovations.
We've done it in 1983.
It was a fad, actually. 1982, we talked about fads, I guess.
Back in the eighties, so that might have been Dr. Agon.
Yes, that was Dr. Agon. So a motion by Karen, have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. Okay, this next one is, isn't this one we had a lot of discussion about?
I do prefer to have a recommendation to withdraw based on the conversation that took place by the school committee.
I was going to ask that you do that. Do you have a motion to withdraw the policy of construction manuals unless somebody wants to really fight to keep it in?
I'll second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry, for the discussion. Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Second, IDAC, technology resources, internet acceptable use, we just made, I think the only change here is the website address. So make a motion to accept second reading, change is an IDAC.
So move. Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. IDAC-R, did we change anything here or is this a new?
This was not included in the packet for three of the five school committee members last meeting. So if you move to the third page end, which is the actual student user agreement, you'll see tracked changes in red that move around some of the requested information that was shared by the school district to the parents who are filling this out.
All right, I don't understand. So we're taking out the fact that no home address or telephone number will appear with such work? Is that saying that we will?
It's in the next paragraph. It's just moved it around.
Oh, okay. And that's it?
Yes, and then the dates will change.
Right.
That is it.
Okay. And motion to approve, second reading, Cliff made a motion to approve second reading, IDAC-R. You have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. Drug education, IDBB.
Took out some stuff.
We changed R to is in the first sentence. That's a change from the first reading to the second reading. That's the only other change.
Move to approve, second reading. Second.
Further discussion? I like this because it's simple and straightforward. All in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. IDBC, health and wellness.
No changes from the first and second reading.
Right, it's just a matter of changing some of the names and sections of the law and we added a new name of law. Motion by Karen to approve second reading, IDBC. Second by Cliff, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. IDB, programs for children in special education?
There were some changes in the fifth paragraph down. You asked for a reworking of the wording of the second sentence so that it reads as follows. As a major component of this effort, North Reading will seek external programming, that's the new phrase, which provides classes for low incident special needs populations for children from age 3 through the 22nd birthday, as appropriate is new wording as well.
Yeah, I believe that was pressed with by Karen and it makes sense because we don't want to commit ourselves to one collaborative.
Yes.
And we want to be able to use whatever resources we can use.
Correct.
Okay. To approve, second reading, IDB.
Motion by Cliff. Second by Karen. All in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. IDBC, homebound instruction?
The only change was to the last sentence. This policy applies to all students, period, not quantifying anything else.
Motion for IDBC?
Move to approve, ID, second reading, IDBC. That's amended.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. IDFA, athletic policy?
The change is in number 5. Not calling it farm activities anymore, but a feeder program.
Right, I think that's a good change.
And then on the second page, if you move down from the third paragraph from the bottom, removing the word senior in front of high school. And in the top paragraph, I forgot this, instead of saying it shall include intrascholastic, we said it may include intrascholastic competition or intramural activities when recommended by the board.
Move to approve, second reading, IDFA as amended.
Motion by Cliff, have a second? Second. Second by Karen. All in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. Then we have IHCR, which is grading weighted grade point average in class rank, which has been changed to reflect the new policy, the new policy that was approved.
Last spring.
Last spring, forever.
And there are no changes from the first reading to the second?
No motion.
Move to approve, IHC-R.
You have a second? Second reading? Cliff, second?
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry, all in favor? Aye. Proves unanimous. Thanks, thanks. Carl's up, ready? Yes, we really, we really went quickly through those. That was good. Okay, next, we have an update from superintendent on the director of finance and operations search timeline, Kathy?
Yes, included in your packet is the timeline that had been presented to you previously. We are on target. The closing date for applications is this coming Friday. As it stands right now, we have 26 applicants as compared to at the end of the process last spring, we had 20 applicants. So we've already exceeded the number of individuals that have applied. I just want to mention that Carl's last day as a full-time employee was last Thursday, February 28th. He is now on interim status, working just as hard as he did.
He looks much more relaxed since last Thursday, doesn't he, Jerry?
Yeah.
He really looks, he looks a lot better. Right, exactly.
Lot younger.
Lot younger, absolutely.
Actually, he looks kind of the same.
Jerry.
So you can see that what is coming will be next week applicant review by a group of administrators, a school committee member, that person was Cliff last year who sits on the interview committee. And then we will be scheduling our interviews around those identified candidates that will be moved forward. I will be holding an interview committee orientation again on March 27th. It's just short but it's to review the protocol associated with our interviews. We will be interviewing during that first week in April and hopefully identifying finalists by April 9th. Those finalists will meet, have another meeting with the administrative council, an informal conversation, an opportunity to have an informal chat. And then the school committee will conduct their interviews in public on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. And the start date for this successful applicant will be July 1st, 2013.
Great. Any questions? I ask. Yep, I do too. Okay, and next, he finishes last full-time day on Thursday and Friday morning a budget arrived and went to a staff. We're going to have Mr. Nelson give us a presentation on the fiscal year 14 preliminary budget, Carl.
Can you leave lights down? Can you see the screen? Okay.
Probably making a move. What gives?
Turn to chairs.
Oh, yeah, turn to chair, that's great.
Well, thank you. You know, today kicks off the first public airing of the FY14 budget. You know, it's that season. I think that you'll find that after we review this budget, you'll find it a good budget. I think you'll find it conservative. It reflects a lot of work by Kathy's staff, the principals and directors, and we're proud of what we put forth here from and to. It would also say that the school committee of course received their hard copy of the preliminary budget in Thursday or Friday afternoon's mail, but to the school committee and to the public, of course, we have preliminary budget up on our website. So the public can follow along the process at any time. They go to the North Reading Public Schools district homepage and click on business office and that will bring them to the budget. And we maintain current information on the website at all times so people can follow the process and as we move towards conference meeting.
You have to be in the computer?
Oh, my, I had no. No. So I think it's important to start off our discussion with reminding ourselves where our funds come from because it is the source of our funds that really help us understand where we're going and some of the limitations that we feel as the process unfolds. As people can see by that pie chart, that is a pie representing the sources of money that fund the North Reading Public Schools budget. Looking at the smaller, darker sections, we notice that the brown section, state aid, represents 15% of the budget. That's really only a little less than a sixth of our budget. We hear a lot about chapter 70. The chapter 70 only represents that portion of our budget. And of course, here on March 4th, it's still early for us to know what our ultimate chapter 70 allocation will be, but at this point, we are estimating a figure which happens to be a level funding number from the present year and using that as our number. Following that, we noticed that 9% of the budget comes from various local receipts from the town, you know, licenses and things of that nature, represents about a tenth or so of our budget. Fees and grants, which the North Reading Public Schools writes, that includes revolving funds, bus fees, athletic fees, and the grants that we write represent 5%. So it's pretty important for us to then notice that when you look at that purple slice of pie in the bottom right, property taxes from residents of North Reading represent 71% or about three quarters of our budget. So I think that's important to understand as we look towards how the budget is funded. We've talked before about the structural problem that North Reading faces as well as most communities. Since the school budget is so property tax-based and since our budget, as we noted in an earlier slide, is comprised by 75% of the property taxes, it leads to certain limitations which really challenges us. As we know, property taxes- As people can see by that pie chart, that is a pie representing the sources of money that fund the North Reading Public Schools budget. Looking at the smaller docked sections, we notice that the brown section, state aid, represents fifteen percent of the budget. That's really only a little less than a sixth of our budget. We hear a lot about chapter seventy. Chapter seventy only represents that portion of our budget. And of course, here on March fourth, it's still early for us to know what our ultimate chapter seventy allocation will be, but at this point, we are estimating a figure which happens to be a level funding number from the present year and using that as our number. Following that, we noticed that nine percent of the budget comes from various local receipts from the town, you know, licenses and things of that nature. It represents about a tenth or so of our budget. Fees and grants, which the North Reading Public Schools writes, that includes revolving funds, bus fees, athletic fees, and the grants that we write, represent five percent. So it's pretty important for us to then notice that when you look at that purple slice of pie in the bottom right, property taxes from residents of North Reading represent seventy-one percent, or about three-quarters of our budget. So I think that's important to understand as we look towards how the budget is funded. We've talked before about the structural problem that North Reading faces, as well as most communities. Since the school budget is so property tax-based, and since our budget, as we noted in an earlier slide, is comprised by seventy-five percent of the property taxes, it leads to certain limitations, which really challenges us. As we know, property taxes are capped at two-point-five percent, and when other sources are relatively flat, it challenges us. You don't see growth that is proportionate to what you'd like to do with a budget. It doesn't keep up with enrollment increases, it doesn't keep up with some of the investments in infrastructure and technology and science that we'd like to make. Furthermore, expenditures, those two bulleted expenditures are increasing at rates much faster than the revenue we bring in. The healthcare costs that are paid for, these are healthcare costs for school and town employees, healthcare costs, as we all know, are increasing at a rate far greater than inflation. And as is the case with most school districts, not just North Reading, it's very common across the Commonwealth, special education mandates are also increasing at a, this year nineteen percent. Our year-to-year increase in special education costs is nineteen percent. So these are some of the structural problems that we're facing.
Carl, I just wanted to add, there was a troubling story in the Globe today about health insurance costs. I don't know if you saw that, but there's been a great effort in the state to try to cap them at increasing, you know, I think, three to five percent a year. And the story in the Globe today said that they expect that the increases are going to be much larger than that, three to five percent.
Yes.
And it's just a big concern, because obviously, the town, the town vets that every year gets proposals, but if they're predicting higher increases, then, again, it just has a bigger impact on us because of what you're saying up here and the restraints or the constraints that we have.
Exactly. And I know here in North Reading, employee health insurance has been, how can I say, the coverage has been modestly reduced the last two successive years in order to reduce the costs to the town. Copays have increased, things of that nature, and it'll be measures of that nature that are going to be required in the future. So let's start to look a little more closely at our budget. The budget that we call the preliminary budget that the school committee now has shows the fact that our school expense budgets are level-funded for the seventh consecutive year. I think that's important to point out. I think that that is a point that we make, because our focus in the budget, as always, is classroom education. And the school principals, directors, the superintendent focus on how can we bring as much money out of the budget as possible? And how can we focus on hiring teachers and hiring personnel to teach kids? And one way to do that is to keep your expenses low. So, once again, in this budget, for the, with a few exceptions, we're level-funding school budgets. And that's a challenge for the principals. Point number two there, I think it's important to point out that in this budget, there are some exceptions to the level services that we have been focusing on in recent years. And an important exception is the funding of year two of NRPS two thousand sixteen. Superintendent Willis presented that to the school committee a couple meetings ago. There is detail in the budget that we distributed Friday on the cover flap that describes the details of NRPS two thousand sixteen and the three components of that initiative, of course, our further technology integration, an increase in the textbook line, and a restoration of professional development. So the budget does include that initiative. Number three, we've talked here at the school committee about no Adam science that was referred to tonight, and I believe we had that a couple meetings ago. We have included a modest increase in the funding of no Adam, so we continue that initiative. Number four, we do have some enhanced costs in the athletic area. As the committee knows, our high school tennis team needs to play somewhere, and there have been arrangements for the high school tennis team to host home matches in Middleton on River Road, and there's a rental fee attached to that, both this year in this present budget and next year, we have to fund that cost. In addition, enrollment gains are suggesting that we look at two more assistant coaches, and we included that in this budget as well. Number five, FY fourteen is going to be a year for high school accreditation. The New England Association will be visiting North Reading and working with the faculty and the staff here in North Reading to focus on looking at the high school. And the high school accreditation costs amount to about twenty-five thousand dollars. This is an expense that we incur every ten years. Principal Bernard is working closely with the association to quantify what those expenses are, and that is the recommended number. But members of the committee probably know, we literally have to provide room and board to the visiting team that comes to North Reading, and that's really what the bulk of those expenses are. Number six, we have a fairly significant increase in special education costs in this preliminary budget. I can assure you that a lot of efforts are underway to make sure that that figure is a real figure. This is one of the more difficult aspects of a budget at this point. You know, here we are in March, and we're trying to determine what the, frankly, mostly outplacement costs are going to be for next September through June. That's a difficult task. So at this stage, we tend to try to envision what the costs are going to be, even though we don't know what all the issues are going to be. So at this point, that's the number that we're using, and we'll continue to look at that as the budget process unfolds. So that's six important things to look at as we look at this budget. It's also important to mention that we continue, even though we talked about this, it's important, I think, for us to recognize the fact that we really work hard to contain costs. As noted earlier, we're level-funding school budgets seven consecutive year. We spend a lot of time trying to manage costs, our utility costs, our phone costs, our electricity costs. And then, thirdly, even though we do see an increase in special education, it's important for us to highlight the fact that we do still have a commitment in North Reading to keeping students in district and trying to develop individualized, customized programming to keep kids in district. That's not only a cost benefit, but we think it's best for kids too. You know, I won't go through all of the details about this, but I think it's important to mention that here we are, our fifth consecutive year, where we have not increased our requests for not only natural gas, but electricity, telephone, all of our utilities. And that's, a lot of effort goes into that, and I really want to highlight Wayne Hardakers were in attempts to run around, control thermostats on weekends, on snow days, whatever he does. And it's also a credit to the staff here in North Reading who work with us to close doors, turn thermostats down, pull plugs out, and it helps us, it helps us put money elsewhere.
I also think that the combination of that with the automated computerized systems we've put in, which allows Wayne and others to control systems from home. So if, you know, if we have a day where the school's called off at six o'clock, and Wayne's already turned the heat on to start warming the buildings up, he can turn it back down. And I think that the technology is also helping that, and that, you know, that'll be a big part of the new schools, is that everything will be automated at the new schools.
It's an excellent point. We actually have a request to the capital planning committee this year to provide that external HVAC control to the hood school. Hood school's the only school in which we don't have external controls for. We showed the capital planning committee this year that by virtue of the HVAC external control that we put on little school about a year ago, we're saving eight, ten thousand dollars a year. So it's not chump change, you know, it's payback over three, four years. So at this point, natural gas, as we look at the slide, but the only thing we can do to save money is to cut a wingmill at the point. Continuing on the theme of cost containment, this is just a little bit more information about how we do try to create individualized programs for special education kids. We work closely with parents. Our director of PPS, Patty Bullard, works closely with the CPAC and the parents to explain some of our goals and initiatives here, and we have great success in developing individualized programs. I believe, Kathy, there's probably about a dozen individualized programs that we've developed in recent years that have kept kids in district.
And most recently this year, the Transition Academy, which is the postgraduate program for students.
Just to explain that a little more in depth, the goal here is to provide the best education for these students, be it out of district or in district. Our goal is if we can provide the same or better education in district at a lower cost, then that's what we strive to achieve.
Exactly.
I think as we look towards FY fourteen in the years ahead, it's important to understand what's happening with our enrollment. For many years, we've talked about this gradual shift that's taking place. We are elementary bulge of enrollments moving through the system and reaching that eighth, ninth, tenth grade level, and that's still true. We are seeing growth in middle school and high school. But we found something interesting this year. We had an unexpected increase in kindergarten. And whether that is a harbinger for the future, I'm not certain, but I believe we're offering five full-day kindergarten sections next fall, up from four this year. And I believe that's the first time we've reached five full-day kindergarten sections.
Do you have a number? Like, number of students register? These are students that register for next year?
Yes. I don't have it with me.
Because remember, this is one of the things I've been telling you.
I know.
That is going to happen. Just want to confirm that. I've been, not you, I've been saying that.
Wrong denial, no.
I know. I've been saying, with all the houses being sold that I'm seeing, we're going to see, start to see an uptick in the lower grades again. And I think this is the beginning.
Parents are choosing full-day K as well. They always have the option of a half-day kindergarten or a full-day, and that is a tuition-based program. But we've seen an increase in those parents that are choosing for full-day K.
And even the number we would provide you for full-day kindergarten, we know is premature, because there's still a lot of spring and summer registrations that you have right up on regular day. But we predict it's a little higher than we expected. So let's look a little more closely at the budget. And I think it's always helpful to understand what is driving the budget, and what is, what is causing the budget to increase from year to year. So there's a lot of information on this slide. What it really does, as you look at it, is you see that the increase that we're talking about from FY thirteen to FY fourteen in this budget, that includes all of the factors that we've described up to now, it's about one-point-one-ninety-one million, one million one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-two-dollar increase from last year to this year. I think it's testimony to how we've rolled up our sleeves to try to create a conservative budget here, to point out that the change from the present year to next year is four-point-seven percent, which is exactly what this year's increase is. In other words, town meeting voted a four-point-seven increase for North Reading schools for this year. This is what we're requesting here in this preliminary budget. Historically, as the committee remembers, the preliminary budget has generally been quite a bit higher. But we've come in, even with the inclusion of NRPS two thousand sixteen, with a budget that has the same increase as the present year. So let's look a little more closely at what these budget drivers are. And you can see on the top two rows that there are really two factors that are driving the increase. As one would expect, salaries is the primary driver. In fact, the increase in salaries there, and this is for negotiated collective bargaining agreements, is nine-hundred-nine thousand dollars. That nine-hundred-nine thousand dollars does include the NRPS two thousand sixteen initiative, but nevertheless, that represents seventy-six-point-three percent of the increase. I think this slide really tells a lot. And then the second row shows that the special ed expenses that we're now projecting represents about twenty-four percent of that net increase. We add those two together, there's your increase right there. The other components of the budget, instructional expenses are actually down on a year-to-year basis, operations and maintenance is down on a year-to-year basis, and transportation is slightly up. One of the reasons transportation is up is because this is the year we have to go out to bid for new school bus transportation contract, so we don't know what our costs are going to be for the next three years. We usually bid three-year contracts on a fixed basis, so we have to kind of assume that there will be an increase for the next three years.
And I also noticed you had a lower amount in for bus fees. Didn't I see that?
Yeah, and the reason for that is it's the whole rollover thing with revolving funds. One of the, one of...
I get you. So this, we don't have to account, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. And it's one of the ways we can kind of save money for the following year. I can explain that in further detail if we move forward.
Carl, I do want to point out one thing. The salaries, and this was through the contract that we negotiated prior to last year, right? You know, we had a great session with the NRTA. These salaries wouldn't have been a lot higher than normally, because they include both these steps and cost of living increases. Normally, this range, we've talked before, is between five and six percent. So the NRTA, working with, you know, cooperatively with us, we've been able to keep these costs in line for the last two years better than we have in the past.
Yeah, I would even go, I would reinforce that by saying that in ten, my ten years here, the year-to-year increase in salary costs for this year and the proposed next year, the lowest ever. Even in those years where we had smaller COLA increases, the step increases were driving. So, point well taken. So this salary, this budget is driven by those two factors, and a lot of work goes into trying to keep all of those other factors low so that we can concentrate on what we're really trying to do. So, moving forward, we have six benchmarks coming up. The community is now, the budget is now available to the community. It's online, it's distributed. The representatives of the finance planning team will be meeting regularly in the next month to six weeks to settle upon an available funds figure. That's another way of saying how much money is available from the town, from their projected revenue sources, how much money is available to help us fund the budget. The present gap, and I added this little sentence just this afternoon, the present gap is about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. That is the gap between available funds and what is contained in the preliminary budget. The school committee will be hosting a budget forum on April first in the middle school large group room, where we'll work with the public and get a sense for what the public would like to do, answer questions. We also then present budget to the finance committee on April eleventh. That's followed by an April twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth school committee meeting, where you'll be recommending a budget to the selectmen, and then we go to town meeting and vote an allocation. So that's a very prequel for you for the preliminary budget. I know that the committee will be scheduling some workshops, we'll be going into this on a line-by-line basis, but this is a way to get the program kickstarted.
I believe the gap is pretty small compared to where we've been in the past.
I won't call it pretty small, but it's a lot better than what we've had at this time of the year.
Right. If last year were like a million and a half.
One-point-one...
One-point-two, one-point-two million. So I'm saying it's small in terms of past history.
That was the first thing to jump right off the page, Adam, if that's right. As bad as it's been in the past.
Right. Any questions or comments for Carl on tonight's budget? Preliminary budget presentation, I should say.
I was wondering if we could schedule a budget workshop for the school committee? I'm looking at three potential dates, March twentieth, March twenty-first, or March twenty-sixth. We'll provide an opportunity to take a look at identified budget gap and begin the conversation.
What days can you say?
The twentieth, the twenty-first, or the twenty-sixth. I believe the twentieth is a Tuesday.
Is that going to conflict, Kathy, at all with the secondary?
Wednesday. It's a Wednesday.
How about the twenty-sixth, though? What's the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth is a Tuesday.
Yeah, that, is that conflict with possibly?
Probably will be an SFC meeting, I would assume.
Yeah.
Good point. The twentieth is a Wednesday, the twenty-first is a Thursday.
I'll be gone.
You'll be gone.
I can, I can do either.
I'd want to try to get all five of them.
I can call him or say...
You could call him or Skype him.
Yeah.
If you can do that.
Sure.
We can set up Skype.
It's a workshop, so that's okay. No votes are taken.
We can set up Skype.
Be in the conference room, yes.
In the conference room. Can you do that?
John, I'm sorry.
So either the twenty, the twentieth is probably better for me than the twenty-first, but I can do either.
Whatever's good for everybody else. Now, when Mike Skypes in, can he hear us talking about him or?
Yeah.
Yes, he can.
I'm sorry. Beginning of the week?
The eighteenth is Monday.
Yeah, I don't think I can make it to that town meeting.
Yeah, I don't think I can make it to that town meeting.
But the 20th is a Wednesday.
20th. Monday's town meeting.
20th or the 21st for budget workshop?
Workshop.
Just want to make this real clear. And what time would you like?
6:30 or 7:00? I need these.
We're going to Skype with Michael?
He's going to be away, so he's going to Skype in.
Oh, that's awesome.
What works for you, 6:30, 7:00?
As long as it's after 6 o'clock.
Okay. 6:30?
Fine, would you?
6:30?
Let's work.
Daniel, pizza or you go?
On the 20th? No, let's get food. It always puts us in a better mood.
I never have time for dinner before I come to the office.
So it's 30?
Yeah.
20th?
20th. So that would be the budget workshop, and we will have food.
And we'll send her on the menu?
Yes.
As she has in the past, that's worked over.
Yes, we'll send that electronically.
I'll just keep my audit now.
And that will be in the superintendent's office conference room.
Okay.
March 20th, 6:30.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments for Carl?
Oh, good job, Carl. It's pretty straightforward, pretty concise, and like Mel said, not that we're going to minimize it, but that deficit is a little bit better than the shape that we're usually in at this time of the year. So especially considering, you know, a couple of the initiatives that are in there, too.
And so the committee understands that a lot of work has gone into this preliminary budget. So calling it preliminary is almost not accurate because we did a lot of work gone into this meeting with the administrative team and determining what the needs are. But now we'll have our budget workshop, and we'll go through and see if there are things that, you know, can be cut or if there are things we need to add. And then we'll have a budget proposal that we'll take to the equal force hearing. And then when we meet the finance committee.
And that's why the budget calendar has been included in your packet. We had originally, the finance committee had asked us to come on March 27th. They have since contacted us. So that meeting is now going to be April 11th at 7:15 PM. That is the presentation to Venk.
And again, this is pretty much level services, but for the...
Call it a modified level services budget. It does include NRPS 2016.
And I guess I would add, I guess it is level services where we have to rent the tennis courts, but that's a level service.
That's level service.
And we're looking to add coaches, but that's because of the increased participation in the sports teams and not having enough assistant coaches for those teams.
And that's $3,700 that, you know, is still part of the budget discussion, really.
Right. All right, next, NORCAM. Just a couple items on NORCAM. One is I'd like the committee's permission for us to join NORCAM as a group. They have two memberships, individual, a group, and costs is $20, but...
$10 each.
Well, no, it'll come out of our, we have a budget for joining organizations. And it will enable four of us, up to four of us, to become trained, five of us to become trained in using the cameras and the other equipment. And in fact, I already told Phil the other night that I plan on being the first person to take them up on that opportunity.
You just pull the camera like this?
Yeah, exactly. So if no one objects, I don't think we need to be emotive on that, but I'd like to become a member of NORCAM.
For $20?
For $20, yeah.
I guess.
Yes, okay. The second thing is, we discussed this prior, at a prior meeting, and we didn't take it that far. And the proposal is, and it makes a lot of sense, is for us to hold our meetings at Room 14 at Town Hall. It's set up almost as a studio. Equipment, the cameras are there, the sound equipment, everything. It's a much more comfortable meeting room.
They've got those fancy chairs to sit.
They've got comfortable chairs. The floor is warmer. The only issue is scheduling conflicts. So I don't think, we're not going to make a commitment to do this tonight, but I'd like to request that Kathy work with Greg following the next election to see if we can set up a schedule where we can meet every other week or however it works at Room 14 of Town Hall. It's just a much better facility. So unless anybody has any objections, I'm going to have Kathy proceed with that. Everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
All right. Yeah. All right. That's all I have?
I think that'll make us just as important as the selectmen.
It will. And there'll be people that'll actually be here us.
And we have 65% of voting, so.
Correct. But the chairs are more comfortable. The floor is not, you know, thin tiles on top of concrete.
The heat's on.
The heat's on, exactly.
Always on, no matter what.
Yes. So that's all I have on that. Okay, next, DocuSign update. Carl used me as a guinea pig last week, and I'll let him explain.
Well, thank you. As a way of background, committee may recall that we are entering into a transition period, hopefully to enter into electronic signatures. Public may not be aware of the fact that the school committee has to sign one member each week to sign off on our payroll. Also, general laws require that our accounts payable batch warrants, which include all the bills that we pay, are requiring of three centers from the school committee, sometimes as often as two, three times a week. So it's somewhat of a hardship to be making phone calls, trying to get the school committee to come into the business office at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. People are working, people have busy schedules. So we're looking at an electronic solution to this. We've checked with our auditors, we've checked with the town finance director, and we now know that electronic signatures are okay to use and legal and appropriate. So in your packet, I have an implementation plan I could go through very quickly. As the chair mentioned, we did a sample signature on our payroll last week. How did that go for you, Mel?
Simple. And you have the option, if you want it to be your real signature, or you just pick. They give you about 20 different signature styles to pick from. And once you pick from that, pick one, that becomes your official DocuSign signature. It was simple. It took about 30 seconds for the whole process.
What we'll be doing, we'd like to enter into, as noted on this plan, would like to discuss it tonight and use this week as another test week and have all of the members of the committee who choose to get involved, look at what it would look like so that you know what you'd be receiving if we would be needing to designate one person to do the weekly payrolls. Logically, that might be the chair of the committee. And we also would be designating three members to do the accounts payable batches, perhaps. We're thinking of having two DocuSign emails go out weekly at a prescribed time. So we're thinking of possibly sending out the payroll attached to the first accounts payable batch on Tuesdays on or about 2:00 PM. So we would need one signature per payroll, three signatures per payee, and then send out a second one on Thursday on or about 2:00 PM. So we would need, at this point hopefully, to designate three members to do Tuesday and either the same three members to do Thursday or some other collection to do Thursday. What the committee members would be receiving would be a little signature page as well as the detail that you're accustomed to seeing. Looks a little bit different. The payroll is no longer going to be an Excel spreadsheet, if you've seen what it looks like. In fact, this is probably in there today. Instead, it's a MUNIS or an accounting-generated document, which is actually more appropriate because that's right out of the system as opposed to a transition document. And then what the committee would be seeing for the accounts payable document are literally the warrant that goes to the selectmen. I think you know that the selectmen countersign your signatures before the checks are made. So you're getting stuff directly out of the accounting system, and it's fit directly into the check printing process. So it looks a little different. You don't see each and every invoice, but you do see what's going to be paid. So with that as background, what I'd like to do tomorrow is send out a couple sample warrants to those of the committee who would like to be involved so you can see what it looks like. Answer your questions, see if it works okay. And if it does, like to go official starting next week.
Makes sense. And the good thing about it is, you know, for the mobile, if we've got, you get the email on your phone, you can do it from there also. So it's not, you're not limited to just being in front of a desktop or an iPad or whatever.
There's virtual apps. They have their own app.
Right.
They have their own app for Androids as well as Apple products.
And then we can still make Jerry come into the office every three or four weeks to sign something.
I enjoy coming into the office, seeing the staff, I do.
I will miss the staff, but every once in a while, I'll come in and sign, I guess, if we have to.
We'll see for other reasons.
Right. But I think this is a great idea. It'll make life a lot easier.
It'll save me a lot of gas.
Yes.
Well, it solves that whole summer problem, too. That's the big thing. I mean, right now, it's a minor inconvenience, but when you can't get three people in there, that's good to be, you know?
So therefore, Mel, can I suggest the following? That on Tuesdays, payroll will go out always with the chair to sign. And also on Tuesdays, we will attach to it three signatures. Just off the top of my head, I'm going to suggest Mel, Cliff as vice chair, and Karen. So on Tuesday, on or about 2:00, you will see this electronic email in your box, and you will have an opportunity to review the materials before you sign them. If you have questions, we're always available to answer questions. And then furthermore, Mel, I'd suggest on Thursdays, I'm suggesting yourself once again, Cliff once again, and Michael. So Thursdays, Mel, Cliff, Michael. Tuesdays, Mel, Cliff, Karen.
That's fine. What do you find of that?
That's good. Okay. The only thing I would ask, this is just a test week this week. The only thing that will kill this program frankly is frankly you not doing it.
Right.
You don't know.
That'll kill it.
Yeah, that'll do it. So the program has...
Your failure will kill it.
The program has a reminder. So our calendar that I'm suggesting, the Tuesday, Thursday calendar, fits in with the Town Hall's check distribution dates. So at the risk of being a little pushy, we would ask that hopefully you attend to these signature requests within a couple hours. If you can't, let me know because what we would do is rewrote it to another member, or we'd call someone to sign it because otherwise we're stuck.
All right. Let's do the test.
Utility man.
Where is the flow path?
You know what I'll do on Tuesdays and Thursdays? I'll just pack in the middle school parking lot and wait to see if this is involved.
Everybody okay with that?
It's driving me with social anxiety.
Well, Jerry's been, you know, Kathy Amaro, of course, is the person who calls it all.
She's awesome.
All of you have been awesome in signing the signatures, but if I may say, no one more awesome than Jerry. Who comes in constantly. At a moment's notice.
He calls Kathy.
Yeah, he calls Kathy after.
Kathy has to sometimes call me and remind me.
Is everybody okay with this?
Yep.
All right. If there's any issues, just let Carl know. Great, thanks, Carl. Take the initiative, that's great. Okay, next, bills and payroll are done. Minutes, we only have one meeting. I reviewed them from, open session from February 11th. They look fine to me, unless anybody has any changes, additions, or revisions.
Most to approve.
Okay. Motion by Cliff to approve, second by Karen. All's in favor?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Okay. No budget update tonight, Carl?
No.
Staffing, taxes, visit donations, we have one, right?
We do have one. There's a donation of two additional concussion football moments from the athletic boosters to the high school with a total value of $500. There's a copy of the donation letter from the president, Mr. John Norton, in your packet.
Great.
I'll make the motion to accept the donation of these two moments from the North Reading Athletic Boosters Association.
Second?
Second.
Second, motion by Karen, second by Jerry before the discussion. Are you not all in favor? Aye. Close, unanimous. Okay, subcommittee updates?
The athletic subcommittee met on February 12th. One of the things we discussed briefly, the athletic director was present, obviously, but we did talk just briefly about the two additional coaches, which I think we voted to include. Spring sports, as you know, the athletic director made a request that we consider several varsity sports to add an assistant coach. So that we did that with both softball team and baseball team. We did a brief discussion about that, and I think obviously the athletic director was very pleased. The second item that took up most of the meeting was the discussion amongst all of us about upgrading the softball field over at the little school, which is both varsity, junior varsity, and freshman softball complex over there. Discuss some of the things that we thought needed to be addressed. We had Marty Tilton there from Parks and Recreation, Rita Mullin from Recreation, Dave Johnson, John Bernard, Kathy, myself. So there was a whole list of things that we felt we could do to make some improvements at the field. Well, Mel was there, too. Yeah, the chairman was there, yeah. And again, some of the things we wanted to address was, you know, the maintenance of the field, the upkeep of the field, the issue of whether or not we might need dugouts. We talked about the necessity or lack of necessity for irrigation, the opening of bathrooms, admitting bathrooms available to both the players and people attending the games. What else was there?
That's the main issues. And I know that Kathy's already had some preliminary discussions with Chris Molly.
Yes, several of us left the meeting with certain actions that needed to be taken between that meeting and the next meeting that's scheduled.
Yeah, I think one of the key things, too, was we were trying to minimize the actual use of the Field 1, which is the varsity field. And, you know, obviously, one of the concerns is that the kids use it for recess every day. So we were trying to maybe move the kids off of that part of the field onto the rest of the field that's available to the little school, just so there's less use for the field, less wear and tear on the field. And I think that's something the superintendent talked about with the principal, so.
And I also know that Marty and, I believe Marty and Dave Johnson and I think Rita were going to meet to look at past schedules in terms of maintenance done on each field. And the one thing with irrigation is, we really don't use irrigation during the baseball and softball, during the baseball season, because at that time of year, you don't need irrigation. But Marty was going to look into that also.
And there's an idea to be made that, you know, even though you may not be using for high school sports during that time of year, failing to irrigate during the past year could have caused a lot of distress on the field.
Well, we did talk about getting some, you know, we don't, there's no irrigation at the little school here, but we did talk about finding some way to get it watered during the summer months, and Marty said he was going to look into that. They were going to look at schedules for use of the batting cage, the gymnasium, et cetera, to make sure that that's been equally offered to both baseball and softball in the past and will continue to be equally offered to each team.
Yeah, some issues have been raised, and again, we're trying to address the issues that were raised and, you know, move forward in a positive way, so.
Right.
So we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and we'll be reviewing all of the work that happened from the last meeting until tomorrow's meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
I think you could talk about the wall.
Yeah. Have you seen it?
I just wanted to hear because that's the issue.
Yeah. Very pleased with the progress that's being made. I would put, I think they're a third done at this point. They've removed almost all of the old walls they found, to our dismay.
The bodies.
No. That would be, yeah, that would cause dismay.
Well, it depends on who did.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Do you mind if I, you and Kathy, say?
They found that the former walls weren't reinforced. They found that they were, they did not include all of the appropriate engineering basics that has now turned into what we have now. But we're in frequent contact with the contractor. He's working here every day, and the weather and the snow has not deterred him, and he's continuing to be confident he'll come in on time. That's excellent.
Great. Any questions on the wall?
Weather has not been too unwarfarmed either.